Chris, you ready?
Just adding a few people into the meeting. You can go ahead now.
All right, well now call the city council regular meetings order for March twenty fifth. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation to give my councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we invite you and the Holy Spirit to this meeting tonight, Lord, for your wisdom and your guidance. I thank you for your angels, Lord, your ministering angels that you've sent to each and every one of us. I thank you for sending those like minded individuals, Lord, who want your absolute best for this city. I thank you for giving us clarity and forgiving us instructions in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up would be item number four. This would be a proclamation for the child abuse prevention month.
And I do have folks here that'd like to speak on the proclamation.
Okay. If you'll please approach the podium. You just give your name and your organization.
Good evening, all. For the record, my name is Sally Fernsall. I am the supervisor of Healthy Families Program with the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
Healthy Families is a voluntary home visiting parent education and family support program. It has been in existence nationally for over thirty years. And its primary design is to promote positive parenting, enhance child health and development, and to prevent child abuse and neglect. The pinwheels I am holding today signify the campaign Pin Wheels for Prevention. It was launched nationwide in April of twenty two thousand and eight. And we can all see these pinwheels in our communities. They are a symbol for hope, for in a world, a hope for a world where all children will grow up happy, healthy, and supportive families and communities. This evening, to share her experience with healthy families and and she will read the proclamation to follow is Von Emily.
Good evening to all in attendance. My name is Von Emily Colazo. The Healthy Families Program has been part of my family since August twenty twenty two. The program's sole purpose is to provide knowledge on child development, promoting positive parent-child relationship and family self sufficiency. This program provides parents with valuable information which helps strengthen even more my understanding of children's development and parenting. I will graduate with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education this May. As I embark on the journey of being an educator, Healthy Families provided me with a solid foundation of information that I will use to support my future students and their families. I recommend this program for its dedication, determination, commitment, and the love each individual puts into executing its mission to ensure parents understand children's mental, social, emotional, and physical health development, and the strong effect nurturing parenting skills provide to the children's development. And now I will proceed with reading the proclamation. Thank you. Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month in Florida. Whereas Florida is committed to improving the life of all Floridians, excuse me, and securing a better future for the citizens of this state. And whereas children who have adverse childhood experiences are at a higher risk of short and long term physical, psychological, and behavioral challenges that can impact the individual child and the greater community. And whereas parents and caregivers who have resources and support are better equipped to give their children safe and nurturing experiences. And whereas children have better mental health and physical health and academic success when they are raised in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas the Florida Department of Children and Family Secretary has a vision for holistic services by integrating system and services. And whereas the state of Florida has established Hope Florida, a pathway to prosperity and personalized approach to helping families overcome barriers to self sufficiency through community collaboration. And whereas Floridians can call a five zero three zero zero Hope to speak with a care navigator for support to develop a plan to achieve economic self sufficiency, refers to local partners, and help identifying goals and barriers in their lives. And whereas during the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families and the House of Prevention Fund of Florida implements Pin Wheels for Prevention, a statewide coordinated campaign to raise awareness of child abuse prevention efforts by teaching about health child development and positive parenting practices and establishing circles of parents, peer support groups. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month provides everyone a chance to learn how they can play a role in preventing abuse and neglect, including adverse childhood experiences. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month reminds Floridians of all ages that they can help children increase positive childhood experiences, which leads to happier, healthier childhoods. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of Avon Park, Florida thus hereby extend my support to all observing April twenty twenty four as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Florida, done and adopted this twenty fifth day of March twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Be sure to get you guys a signed copy of that.
I would like to give members of the commissioners each a pinwheel. Would that be okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We will move on to the consent agenda. Be approving item number five. It's been minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, item C five.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benoyard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number six, RFP number twenty three oh nine. It's be a proposal from Emilio Garibaldi. Mark, I see your name there.
You had asked, you had asked this to be brought in front of you at this meeting. I had passed out with the Andy Mogul, our purchasing agent, put together for grounds for funding proposal. Non-responsive. So if you whether you want four, over four pages long, you got there. If you want me to read it or however you want to go about it. I'm sure you've all read the proposal.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review it? It's be the packet Mark handed out a little while ago.
No.
Any questions on that? Seeing none? Emilio?
Thank you, guys. Emilio Garibaldi, one twenty six West Main Street. I appreciate the opportunity to present. First, we're gonna start off with it's an Avon Park parquet. So if any of you guys have ever heard of it, in larger cities and even smaller cities, what happens is when green space.
Emilio, you'll have to present to the council.
When green space is a problem in larger cities, they use this type of parquet to bring back the community, to bring back space and attractiveness. To smaller cities that are rebuilding, the same thing applies. What happens is in a pocket park, the enhancement of the community is very important, absolutely important, because we need organic foot traffic, especially in our downtown. Our area lacks that traffic from Donaldson Park to the museum. We need to figure a way to start having people walk up and down and start bringing in more businesses. We already have enough empty buildings. You can go to the next slide, please. My original concept was back in September of twenty three, when I first heard of the RFP. This property is one oh one West Main Street, across the street from the building that I own, which is the old Napa Distribution Center, and in between the Veterans Park. So that corner lot has been there for about four years. And there has been no movement. And I noticed that as I'm building and we're demolishing, I constantly see people that walk past our building, walk past through, and they stop. They look around, they turn around, and they walk back to the Jacaranda or to the park or wherever they came from. So when things like that happen, it's an understanding that we're lacking on certain parts of the city. You can, Chris. As you can see, that's Main Street. On this side here, that's the side of this. Most probably you see it go across to the bandstand, so it faces the bandstand. Now parks such as this, this is a concept for everybody to understand. This is something that I rendered in twenty three. It's not exact to what could be there, but it's what may be there. So with everything that's up there, you notice that there's such an enormous amount of green space that people can freely walk, walk downtown, go through the city if they want to sit under the pergola. Activities on the side for yoga, there's chessboards there, there's flora. It's an abundance and a multi-use property, which that property is zone C four multi-use. You can go ahead. This is just another angle of the dedicated spaces for the activity.
Sorry, I have to do this.
It's okay. It's just another angle of the dedicated space for the activities and the multipurpose use that it'll have. Now with buildings next to it, buildings in front of it, as we bring in restaurants, as we have more volume coming through with the foot traffic that this would bring, it will help the businesses around it. It raises property values. It's just an enormous contribution to the city and downtown to the center part of the city. Now, considering a lot of the beautification that's been going on as the CRA coordinator Sean Holliday was speaking of, what Jason at Public Works did to the gazebo, which is beautiful. We can bring our own flora, our own types of wildflowers, which bring butterflies and dragonflies and such. So with these things like that, it allows for more engagement from the schools, from the community. Things that we don't normally see down here, we can bring, being a multi-use property. Now this here, the pergola, it's another multi-use. So what happens is we can have, if the schools want to do a field trip, if they want to come through and just walk downtown, which they don't do now, which they should be doing. They can come, the teachers can talk, they can have lunch, they can see the pond, they can watch a movie on the side of the building. There's so many different things that are free to the city that's available to the whole community. Most of us have pets. It'll be absolutely pet friendly. We will have our water fountains for people, water fountains for the dogs. It will have cleanup areas, things and such like that. Now, with a fountain such as this, not only will we have aquatic life fish, but it'll also serve a second purpose for the irrigation, for the property, for the fauna and the flora. So having a integral irrigation system is important because that's the purpose of the green space. And having, how we have it on, let me say, in front of my building, I noticed there are sprinklers, there are in the patches, but there are no plants, there are nothing like that. So that's why Sean and Jason are doing what they're doing. And that beautification alone brings a lot of value to the city. Considering we started having events like Mr. Spawler's property, where we had a food truck rally across from Donaldson Park at trunk or treat Halloween. It was a massive success, a massive success. But there becomes problems with how we have to get our permits from the city and such, and liability, which I understand completely, and you have to do, and you have to do that. Now, having a property just like this, we can get around that and the city has no liability to it. Considering the space, we can fit a good five, six food trucks. It brings value. It brings more community gathering and more organic foot traffic. Just another view. Nighttime events, that's something that I've been hearing from the chamber, from the CRA. A lot of nighttime events that they do in other cities are very successful, absolutely one hundred percent successful. We don't have a dedicated space per se that really does that right now. This is another multi-use of this property that we can, we can look at and say, all right, if we decide we want to do a pop-up food truck rally in the evening time on a Saturday and have a movie, we'll have a space for them. A lot of, a lot of times, these pocket parks, they bring such an enormous amount of camaraderie between the city because we don't have items that are readily available to us right now. Donaldson Park is fantastic. The museum and the HCA is fantastic, but we're lacking as we're coming in the middle. Something like this will bring in more businesses, bring in more foot traffic, bring in more people from out of town that come up sixty four and they say, wow, what is this? Let's stop here and take a look. Okay. So my original plan, when I first put in the RFP, was the AP parquet. One day, I was in Sebring behind the Lakeside Theater. And I'm looking at it and I said, oh, man, look at this park. And I noticed it's a rotary park. I'm also a Rotarian. After seeing the rotary park, as crazy as it is, I get a phone call from Dr. Seventy. And he says, Emilio, you know the idea of your park? And I said, yes. And he goes, well, I'm sitting here right now in Lake Placid looking at their rotary park.
I need to say it so I know when to change it.
As Doc Seventy is telling me about how beautiful the park is and how people have been going through it forever, ever since they put it in. It hit me and I said, this would be a perfect, perfect opportunity for us to do something with the rotary in Avon Park, considering there's a Lake Placid Rotary Park, a Sebring Rotary Park, but not in Avon Park. Good. Every rotary park concept is different, but beautiful nonetheless. Good. As you can see, they have the dragon there, the fountain. Go ahead. Here's the Sebring Rotary. It has all the points of all the streets on the circle, absolutely gorgeous. And I believe we can do the same here as a community. This here is Bel Air, Michigan. It was in a very poor part of town, absolutely poor. And Galen Thomas, the president of the HCA, sends this to me. And she says, Emilio, you see this place here? It was a dump. There was nothing here but storage and barrels and everything around. After they started putting this together as their own type of park, the events started happening and people started coming. That's something that this town absolutely needs. And I stand behind it a hundred percent.
All right, so we got a couple of obstacles to overcome here.
Yes.
First of all is the RFP. The RFP would be for a building that was meant to be retail. We have a whole list here of reasons why.
I'm sorry, you said a building?
Yeah, it was for a multi-story building was what the council.
Can you please show me where that on the?
I was sitting here on council whenever we voted for it, you can look up the minutes. That's what it was about.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, can you show me on the RFP where it says?
One A, it says the size and square footage of the proposed buildings and all other uses and spaces, keyword, keyword, and proposed buildings.
Correct.
And.
So the thing is, we're not here to argue with Emilio. The point is that does the council want to overstep with the RFP that we put out? And now a request for parks? Or do we want to stick with the original RFP, which was for a building? So it was established at that time that the highest and best use for that property would be for a multi-story building long term. Now, we had talked about the possibility of putting in a pocket park there as a placeholder until such time a developer wanted to build a multi-story building. But the council has to first decide if we want to part from that and accept RFPs for parks alone.
Did you have something to say, Jerry?
Yeah, I mean, the RFP has already been accepted for something else and it's there. They already own the building. I don't see, I don't see how they can possibly, how you can possibly say, okay, well, now we want to park. It's a done deal. That RFP is gone. If he has, if he has a disagreement with how it was done, or he thinks something was done wrong, he's always got the option to sue the city, you know, and or the CRA. And, but I'm, I need to speak to council, but my feeling is, given how many non-responsive things were made in here, I don't know how you even get past getting standing to file suit. But perhaps he's coming here to try and get you to do that. But I would say you should think long and hard about that because you already have a deal that you made under the RFP. And.
Love it.
It's.
So what is, it's fucking stone that we can't go back and fix the RFP?
We can go back and say, okay, you don't, you no longer have this building. We're now going to take that building from you and we're going to do the RFP again. Somebody else.
It's, it's an empty piece of grass.
It's an empty lot that we put on RFP for developers.
There's nothing on that lot.
I thought you were referring to the.
No.
No, no, no. This is for the vacant lot next to the diving girl, which was the old Wild Building Lot.
Okay.
So the point is that the council, if the council wants to accept RFPs for parks, number one is it needs to go out to clearly say that we are accepting RFPs for parks. That would be the first thing. And number two, you know, everybody needs to have time to submit it. I don't think that that was widely known because it wasn't put out that way. I mean, the council was very clear that we wanted a multi-story building there because it's what we had and that's what member.
No.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for your comment. So many members of the community had actually showed up to that meeting whenever we were talking about it because they wanted to see a building built back there. Now, obviously, the building that was there was two-story. We have the ability now that we can go more than two-story and go three, even up to five. So the best use is to get more living downtown, is to get more offices downtown. And if we want to part from that, we can, but it just, this is not the way to do it.
I'll ask a question, please.
Sure.
From the time when you said that the RFP is supposedly for a building, how many RFPs came in for the building?
Zero. That was understood. We knew it might be thirty years. That's why we proposed the city. That's why we proposed the city putting a park there as a placeholder. That's what that was for.
For a park. Two benches? Right? That's what was said at the meeting.
We didn't decide on anything.
Before.
If you're done, if you're done with.
Will you guys make your decision? I'd like the two guests that I brought to speak, please. Is that okay? They're on the agenda?
If they, if they have sign up sheets, by all means.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Can I have Miguel Soto come up here, please?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Miguel Soto. I'm the owner of one nineteen West Main Street with my wife, which she's here.
Yes, sir.
We own the property next to where Mr. Emilio is proposing the rotary, the park, the design that he just showed.
Yes, sir.
I am forward and I think it's a positive thing to be done, especially me as a new investor here in this city. I've been living here for many years. I reside in Avon Park Estates also, and I am a business owner in Sebring. I run a immigration law firm, but I'm also interested in bringing to my building new businesses, myself investing in different kinds of businesses in my own property. I am remodeling the building. It has already, living space upstairs is a mixed-use building. And I think this is something that I'm very forward, even if I would permit to put a mural that has something to do with the city of Avon Park, anything that has to do with the beautification of the city. So I think it's something that I completely am a hundred percent forward with Mr. Emilio.
I'm assuming you must, you must be a relatively new owner of that building?
I've, yes, I'm relatively new.
Okay. Yeah, I tried on many occasions to get the previous owner to go out for facade grants. So I just wanted to let you know that we do have facade grants for the outside of the building that are available through the CRA. So please.
Well, I'm interested in going that forward with that too. But besides that, you know, me as an investor, I think anything that comes around our city, I believe that where I own my property or he owns his property, it is empty all around and there is not much more. I'm interested in bringing residential people to live there, plus businesses coming in here. And as, you know, a new owner of the property, not naturally from Avon Park, but I do belong now here, so I think it's something that I'm really forward in. And I give him my a hundred percent vote to you guys to think about this proposal.
We appreciate you coming and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You said you had another person?
Yes, sir. I'd like to have David Flowers from the Rotary come up, please.
Name and address, please.
David Flowers, one oh seven West Lake Damon Drive, Avon Park. It's a pleasure to see you all again. I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Avon Park. Recent discussions in the community have created the potential for confusion about the Rotary Club of Avon Park with respect to the potential use of property where the Wild Building once stood. I'm here to provide a little clarification on our part on this topic. The Rotary Club of Avon Park Board of Directors met to discuss this opportunity presented by Mr. Garibaldi to define the Rotary brand on a potential pocket park at that location. The board agreed that we support the concept of defining a park or structure in the Rotary name of Avon Park, not the acquisition or the design right now. The board recognized that if any opportunity occurs, the club and the property owners would need to work together to determine what commitment the Rotary Club of Avon Park would need to make to warrant adding the Rotary brand to it. We certainly don't want any controversy with it.
Sure. Appreciate your comments.
Questions for me?
Thanks for coming, Dave.
Can I ask you one, one thing, Mr. Flowers? What's been y'all's normal discussion as far as? I've heard from one of your members that you guys have always gone back to like a bandstand or a bandshell directed more towards Donaldson Park as far as having the Rotary name on it.
That is still in the works that we want to do in Donaldson Park, but that wouldn't be specifically, we wouldn't change the name of Donaldson Park to Rotary Park. That would be just having our name on the bandshell itself.
So no financial commitments have been made to Mr. Garibaldi?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
Yeah. Was there any discussion of budget for this project?
Not that I can recall. We were basically saying.
In concept only.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for David?
For David, no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I do have a comment. You're right, originally, and rightly so, we all agreed that we should, you know, the best interest of the city, you know, put a building back there if we could to get the most, uh, you know, about a return on our investment, so to speak. And, uh, and I, I think that a building would probably give us the most, biggest return on investment. But then you also have to look at, you know, how are buildings selling in the downtown area? As we know, we got a building close by that was sat there for several years to basically was, it was a city-owned building and it was basically almost worthless. There's also a building across the street, I think it's an old bank building, that's been there for several years and it's vacant. And even though I've understood that the owner is considering possibly selling it, I've heard that from him personally for quite a few years now. And it may or may not be up for sale. I don't know. So, uh, according to your, your comment about, you know, if we, could we, could we sell it and make more money? Absolutely. Could we sell it in the next couple of years? I say, great, let's do that. But I really don't want to be honest with you. I don't want to wait 20 or 30 years for that to happen. I don't want to sit there and have a vacant green lot with a couple bushes on there. I just think we needed to think something about what would be the, from the best interest of the city and the citizens and what would bring more business down. And I think that, um, as you know, I originally was for the pocket park idea, even on a temporary basis. But in looking at these renderings, I, I think it looks beautiful. And, uh, you know, we could, uh, we could look at it a couple of different ways. We could look at it or possibly, um, leasing it, you know, for a park, uh, and a year-to-year basis and see if it works out or doesn't work out. Or I think the last proposal for bids was in November and there were no bids, correct? So we could also open it up for bid for the next 90 days and see if we get any bids or not. And then maybe look at this option as a, as a definite proposal. And so I would personally be willing to look at it because I think that the, the drawings that, that Mr. Emilio showed us, I think it looks beautiful. I think it would do a lot for downtown Avon Park. I think it would give a lot of places for people to go to sandwich shops, donut shops, ice cream shops, or even just any business who wants to take a lunch break instead of sitting in the break room in the back or sitting in the car, they could walk down to that park. I think it's, it's beautiful. Uh, that it all depends on how we would transcend selling it, leasing it, our timeframe. But I, I think it's an idea that we need to give a serious look at it because I really like it. I think it looks beautiful and, uh, and, you know, I think he's done a really good job as far as his renderings. And, uh, I, I think it's something that we need to consider. And, uh, I'd be willing to, uh, do a proposal to open it up for bid again for a certain length of time and see if we could sell it. But, but not a year, five years, 10 years or 20 years. I think the sooner the better because the longer it sits there, then the longer the rest of the building is possibly could stay empty too. Our goal is to get businesses brought to downtown and get those empty buildings, get people in there. And that's one of the reasons why we have great people like Sean and Kamla and, and maybe Jane to help us get to that direction. And, uh, if this is something that would also would help bring people downtown and want to bring their business down there, then I think it's a serious, it's worth serious consideration. And I, I like the idea myself. That's my opinion. But I'm open to the rest of opinions of the council. And like I said, I, I'm not opposed to the fact that you, let's put it out for bid and see. Maybe now somebody's interested in buying it because I think if people look around Avon Park, you can see things starting to move. I mean, things are starting to grow. Businesses are starting to come down. Uh, the airport is getting ready to be turned over. And, uh, so I, I think we're in, in a great situation to where Avon Park is going to let you come back sooner than to be the number one city in Highlands County. But, uh, if we can't get the, the lot sold to, for somebody to build a building in a reasonable time, then I like what was offered tonight.
Sure. No, I agree with you, um, fully. I mean, I just think that the, perhaps the best option would be to put it out for a set number of time to give us time to discuss what parameters we'd like to put on a park if we're going to consider parks. That's something that wasn't discussed. That's why it's not listed. So if we want to, you know, put it out for 90 days, uh, again, the same as it was. And then that would give us 90 days to come up with the criteria that we would accept, uh, proposals for, for parks.
Yep, I think that's.
Mayor, can I add something quick on that?
Sure.
It's, it's currently out, closes in, in June. What is it? June 5th.
Okay. Got it. Okay. So is anyone opposed to letting that ride to the June 5th? And let's decide between now and then, uh, what sort of criteria we'd like to see for a park proposal if we want to do that at all?
So we're saying the RFP closes again on, on June 5th?
Correct.
I, I'm going to wait that time. I, now, now you can say, look at all the people in the audience that all love Avon Park. They're all here for one reason or another. I, I think that you walk through the community, you can see how many people are getting excited about Avon Park. I know I'm excited. I love this city. I want it to grow. I want it to be something fit. But, but I also want to do, we have to make hard decisions up here on how we're going to spend our money, spend your money. And obviously, one of the hardest things that I'd never liked, the city buying buildings or owning buildings because you see how difficult it is to get rid of them and then make decisions whether you're going to make them into a parking lot or a park or, or, or even a business or something. So I, I think we owe it to ourselves and the citizen taxpayers to give it till at least June and let the council maybe hear opinions from the people that live here, what they think about. If we didn't get an offer, whether we should move forward with an idea of something like this that we could find tune and then work out some type of agreement that we could do this properly and beautifully. And I think that way at least we're being fair to everybody that, that's here tonight as well as everybody in the city. So I like that idea. I, I wanted to wait.
I have a question for, for Emilio.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what does that sound like to you?
Well, considering it was, I had to wait for a response and it's almost four months now. I mean, I was the only respondent and it took more than 90 days for me to even get an answer of rejection. So for me to sit here and say from March to June.
You're actually, I look at it two months.
I don't want to, I don't want to arg, I'm not here to argue with the city. I was proposing something that's beneficial to the city. Um, considering we both own the buildings right in the center, which is pretty big. Um, I just wanted my opportunity to, to show it to the board and show it to the city. Yep. If you want to wait till June, I, I can't argue that. I'm just curious, I think that of course, all the RFPs that if they do come in should be public. And, um, considering that no one in all this time has ever done one, I'd be surprised to see if someone does bring something in. If they do, if they do a better job than me, then go for it. But, um, I'm here for the growth of the town.
All RFPs are public.
Excuse me?
All RFPs are public.
Okay. So I'm here for the growth of the town regardless.
Okay.
If somebody comes in and puts a monstrosity building with a slide on the top, I'll be happy.
Got it.
But, you know, I just want my shot so that I can give back to the city.
I appreciate it. And I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
I think you gave us another option to seriously look at. And I think that, uh, if we're going to make a serious decision, waiting two, two and a half months is worth the wait.
There's, 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 there are things we would have to go over, of course. I understand, Mark.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, that's on the council, how you guys want to vote.
All right. Well, we need a motion to that effect, Mayor Jerry?
Yep.
Jim, do you care to make a motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, continue with the bid process up to June 5th and then consider whether we're going to possibly change the RFQ for.
RFP.
RFP for a different option than, than a, a building.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any last golf questions? Yep, you'll have to come up to the microphone there, bud. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Alec Wade, 201 Golf Point, Lake Placid. So I'm not from Avon Park, but like visiting Avon Park, you can see that it's dead out here. You know what I mean? You can see like when you come to the main street, there's like nothing in those buildings. Nothing, absolutely nothing. Like nobody's here, you know? And it just, it breaks my heart. So I don't, I think that we don't need another building out there. I think what we need is like something that can bring people.
Buy one and fill it up. You can do it. I believe in you.
Absolutely. Yeah. And as a business owner, I might do that one day, but as it stands right now, I have no interest.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we have.
Question. The RFP can't be, um, terminated early.
Well, of course we can, but that's what we just are proposing to let it.
So if it goes, we could, we can take it out to June 5th or we can terminate the RFP early.
But you, I mean, it's unlikely as I heard, but it's possible that somebody could be out there putting one together. And if you terminate it now.
Really? I don't think they, I mean, if we have a deadline by now, I don't, I don't think they're.
I'm not saying it's likely. I'm just simply saying that's a, that is a possibility. Uh, that's why you have deadlines that you set and you publish those deadlines. But that's up to you.
All right.
I'd like to see it.
Understood.
Terminate early.
So we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven is to be the council review of electric vehicle DC fast charging site host agreement. Mr. Schrader?
Well, you had it in your packet, um, back in, I think it was middle of September, I got this, um, Nancy Dodd had sent it to me, see if we were interested, um, uh, Florida, the State College, they turned it down. They said they were going to go do it their own. And they offered it to the Jackaranda and they said, no, they didn't want to give up parking spots. That's when they sent it to us. I looked at it, actually I was out of town that day and I asked Sean to go over and meet with them. And then when I got the agreement, I looked at the agreement and said, my gosh, this is one-sided. And I gave it to Jerry. It isn't five years, it's 10 years. You've probably looked at it. And after talking to Jerry, I just said it there and wasn't like I made the decision or whatever. I just said it to the side. Got a million things going on and that's what happened. I did though, at the time, and I haven't since looked in, like RFPs other cities put out. And in this one, we get nothing out of it. They just use city property, as you probably read it. Um, but I did find some that, uh, a couple in Florida, a couple in Virginia or whatever were, they had put out an RFP and they were actually renting. I think one of them was, I think it was a thousand dollars a year for each spot and they got, um, 3% on whatever they were making. So that's an option if you want to go that way. When I talked to Jerry, I'd ask him about, you know, he, he drives a Tesla, of course it's, he uses their chargers probably about, you know, because actually I'm the one that came up with maybe that, um, down by the basketball, who might be a good idea if we brought people off 27 to charge, are they actually going to spend money downtown or whatever? But it's still something can be looked at. But my thought is if we're going to do it, why not put on an RFP for it if we want it down here? So the city can actually make some money on it. But that's just my thought.
There, there were some other problems, obviously with the contract. It had to be changed because there were some things that are statutorily required that weren't in the contract. And, um, there are aspects were just really one-sided, as, as Mark said.
Jerry, do you think that pickleball people or EV people?
Not, not as a whole, you know?
Okay. The only reason I bring that up is that if we did want to put out an RFP, you know, that would be a, a very appealing spot. If we're going to go through all the trouble of building the competition-ready pickleball courts, it would be a highly, a highly used area.
Well, most of them are in places where they're either convenient to highways or places where people congregate and work. And, um, it's easy for them to park there and walk to work and, uh, and charge while they're at work. Because, uh, some of the chargers, if they're not Tesla charged, Tesla chargers are very, very fast. But some of the chargers, um, are incredibly slow.
Yeah.
And so you would, you would have to wait like four or five hours just to get enough to go home. So, you know, um, you, that's why those are, you know, they have it, um, set up that way.
I don't think the historical society would have a problem with people waiting four or five hours to charge their car there. Now, we just have a lot of CRA parks, or CRA parking lots rather, uh, and city-owned parking lots. So if, uh, the council did want to see more EV charging stations, I mean, I think it, putting out an RFP would be a good way to go. Um, as Mark pointed out, there's several cities out there that are able to at least get enough of a commission to pay for the upkeep, uh, to keep it ongoing. I mean, if something is continually costing money every year, chances are it's not going to last. So setting something up in a way where it generates enough revenue to keep itself going is going to be better for everyone involved, I would believe.
Well, is the, is the negative part that, one, if we don't have to maintain it, but, and if we don't make any profit off of it, isn't added some value to the city to have it, have one though?
Potentially.
You, you really have to have some value to the city of some type in order to do that. If you're going to, um, allow them to have, use city property to make money in, in some way, it needs to have some kind of a benefit to the, to the city as a whole.
The added people coming through is an added benefit though?
I, I, I can't really say.
Because don't, don't Tesla cars or EV cars have charging areas where, where they're informed about where the next charging station is?
It comes up on our screen. If we're looking for a charger, we, we, we can ask, we ask it for chargers and it'll tell us where the closest ones are.
So right out on 27, that would be pretty close.
It's possible. It depends, like I said, but a Tesla charger, a Tesla driver is not going to use a standard charger. If they're talking about Tesla charger, then okay. But if a standard charger, I, I just have to give you an example. I, I went, had to go to Juanita, Florida, and, um, I had to charge up there. And, uh, it was close to, close to Lakeland and, um, uh, they couldn't, it was a long drive to get to Lakeland, but there was a charger nearby and, and there were some Tesla chargers there as well. But I accidentally hooked up to one of the standard chargers and it was said I'd be, I would be there for six hours. And I, and I went, what the heck? And then I realized I hooked up to the wrong charger, hooked up to Tesla and it said I'd be done in 45 minutes. So that's the difference. So we're, we're really looking for those type of chargers as opposed to, you know, from Tesla's perspective, but there's a lot of other electric cars out there. Like I said, if usually in those types of cars and those types of chargers, it's circumstances where, you know, there, it's somewhere where it's convenient for them, like a mall has, malls have them because they're going to be there for at least a couple of hours. You know, or work areas where they can park it while they're working.
Well, I know that a couple of our dealerships here in town have electric cars that aren't necessarily Tesla. So that might be a good, uh, you know, a good benefit.
Possibly.
It would certainly be good to ask them. I mean, I, you know, Bill, Jerry, at Houston have several car dealerships. I mean, they're going to know what their customers want probably better than anybody would. So just asking them their opinion on where they should be placed is probably the best place to start. And if that coincides with city-owned properties, then it looks like you have a recipe for an RFP to maybe get something done.
Will we make money if we did it that way?
Whatever the RFP says.
Okay.
Somebody would make money.
Yeah, somebody will.
I, I, one thing I hate is rumors and accusations, but I've heard a rumor that they were thought, thinking about putting one in Walmart. Uh, to me, that would make sense because you could plug it in, charge it, go do your shopping and then come out and hopefully be ready to go. So has, has anybody ever heard, does, you know, Duke ever offered them that? Or any, any business area in this was offered by Duke to do something?
Have I heard that Duke offered that?
Yeah.
No, other than the two I noted that she told me that they turned them down.
Okay.
And I haven't heard anything about Walmart either, so.
Okay.
Not say it isn't true.
No, I, I, I think, I thought Walmart, and you know, one thing I had to look at too, we'd have a cou- couple hotels here that there's one especially down the road there that, uh, if you notice, there's like tons and tons and tons of 18-wheelers parked there. So I actually think that Highlands County is, is in central Florida, is one of those areas where people coming from North Florida or out of state, going down to South Florida, they may need a halfway stopping point. And, you know, I, I think it'd be a good idea to have one, but I understand what your reasoning is, is here that if we're, uh, And, you know, I, I think it'd be a good idea to have one, but I understand what your reasoning is, is here that if we're, uh, uh, I guess if we had a, some city property on twenty seven that we could use, maybe that would be something that we could do RFQ for.
RFP.
RFP, I like to let a Q somebody. But uh, so yeah, at least I, I appreciate the fact that it was presented. I, I understand the situation a lot better. And uh, maybe in the future we'll look at, see about putting up a, if it's worthwhile, if they grow in the right direction and there's more EV cars out there that maybe we could do a RFP and, and put it in a place where people would come and use it.
So do we want staff to explore it further, or?
Um.
Yes, I say yes also.
I hear two yeses.
I'll say yes.
Okay, so does anyone care to make a motion to direct the staff to explore the EV charging stations a little further?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the D eight, no, I'm sorry, the D seven to have this city can look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, so there's two different things. The, uh, that was actually for the Duke Energy proposal. What we're talking about, what we had just talked about was asking the staff to look into broader charging stations, not this specific agreement.
Okay, so we're just gonna tell them, sorry, we're not interested?
For now, that would be the idea.
Or maybe we can table this until we get other options.
Yeah, that's the point, yeah. You're not telling anybody anything.
Okay, that's fine. We'll table the, are now, are we still gonna be able if we come back and say, oh, that's not what we wanna do? We wanna stick with the Duke Energy? Are they gonna be okay with us coming back to them? I mean, is this deal too late? Sorry, we're not interested anymore in your property?
Unless they've got somebody else here locally that said, yeah, they want it, but I haven't seen any up.
Randy's got it.
I had some.
The fairest, the fairest way to deal with this is with a RFP. I mean, and then they're obviously welcome to, to put something in.
Sure. Randy, did you have something?
Yes, there is, without specifically naming any businesses, there has been talk about some charging stations coming to a couple of locations in the city.
Well, I know Wawa, you, you just got a Wawa, it's not them, because they, they have got the most Tesla chargers in the country.
These are, uh, but, these are businesses that would have a vested interest in having a charging station. That's all I'm gonna say. But there's been recent talk, as recent as within last few weeks.
Then maybe we should just hold off if they're already in the works of it, you know?
Okay. Well, I think that you've seen that there's enough interest from the council that we would be interested if something does pop up. That would be more beneficial for the city, so. Anything comes along, please let us know.
Yep.
Is that satisfactory?
It is.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number eight, this will be a request to remove alternate, remove alternates from the planning and zoning board for non attendants and replacing with other applicants.
Yes, sir. So, um, as you can see by the documentation provided, there's quite a few meetings where both of our alternates were not in attendance. I've made multiple attempts to reach them. Uh, one phone number goes straight to voicemail, the other is disconnected. Um, so I haven't had a lot, a luck getting that. I think it would be beneficial for us to have two new alternates because there are times where we are at risk of losing a quorum. Has not happened recently, but there have been times in my history here that that's occurred.
Okay.
Now, during the city council, the previous city council meeting, there was a discussion to, um, potentially add Terrence Wells as the alternate. So that is, um, if I may make a recommendation, that's what I would go with. He's expressed an interest in it.
Okay. Is there an issue with us approving that here tonight?
I wouldn't think so, no. I've not received any other interest from anyone.
And we would still have one vacant position?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we would still, we would remove both of them this evening and then just re-instate the.
Correct, because that would be a triggering event for me to go out and, and search for people to, to join.
Okay.
Got it. All right, does anyone care to make a motion to remove, uh, Sabrina Blake and Lark Gilfus, uh, as the alternates and replace with, uh, was it?
Terrence Wells.
Terrence.
Terrence.
Terrence Wells.
Okay.
So move.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number nine is the city manager evaluation format. Denise?
Uh, yes, uh, city council's been provided with a draft of the evaluation form. And if the council approves to use this form, there's gonna be four major areas that'll be evaluated on behalf of the city manager. Uh, one being relations with the governing body or the city council, organizational relations with uh, respect to fiscal management, personnel management, and managing the organization as a whole. Relations with the public and relations with other governments. Uh, there are thirty four questions on the evaluation form in regards to these four specific areas. Council will score it as in any evaluation. Uh, once scored, then each council member would meet one on one with the city manager to go over their evaluation. Uh, the city manager would also be provided with the evaluation form and score himself. Once everybody is done, uh, the final evaluation forms would be turned into a representative of the city to do the tabulation. Uh, once tabulation is done, it would go back to council. Uh, so council as a whole could finalize the evaluation with the city manager. So there's a couple of points that would need to be discussed tonight. Uh, first, if you wanna adopt this form and use it. And if so, who do you want to be the representative for the city that's gonna receive the evaluations and do the tabulation? And then, uh, how quick will the turnaround time be for the one on one evaluations?
So in here, I see a recommendation of thirty days. You stand by that? Okay.
It's, well, depending, I mean, there's five, five council members, so and his schedule. So if you wanna do thirty or forty five days.
Okay. Any recommendation from the board, thirty or forty five, or any other number?
I guess it's how demanding is Mark's schedule? Would you be able to fit all five of us in a thirty day time span?
I can fit you in, problem.
Okay. Thirty days, sound good?
I'm good with thirty.
I'll be all right with me.
Okay.
I, I do have one question. First of all, great job. I, I think this is really, really good.
I had Jerry's help.
Okay, well, Jerry, thank you for your help. Uh, I do have one question on where it says overall rating.
Yes.
Is that gonna be the same as the number system of one through five, or is it gonna be like the total of all the numbers?
It, it's an overall rating, uh, it's a system of one, one through five.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, but as, as an overall.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we want to, uh, name HR director as the point of contact and person that we turn these forms into?
I would be good with that.
Yeah, I'd be good with that. I think she's great.
Okay. All right, so do anyone want, does anyone wanna make a motion to approve the form, uh, set the time limit for thirty days for us to meet with Mark and make human resources director, uh, the point of contact and point of collection?
So move.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, this will be the discussion, the investigation findings for reference to the employee complaint.
Um, before we speak on this, can I please, um, start out before this gets in too far? I, I, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Fine.
I, I'd like to know how long you've been on, on your position right now.
I've been here eight months, but I've been an, an HR professional for twenty five years prior to coming here.
Okay, so you felt comfortable with giving your supervisor an investigation?
Yes, I've done many investigations.
Whether it was good or whether it was bad?
Good or bad.
And you didn't feel like there would be a target on your back about that?
There, in HR, there's always a target.
Well, I understand, but I just kinda feel like this is a one sided, um, investigation. I, I don't know anybody in here who would give their boss a bad investigation report so early into your arrival here.
We also have to take into consideration though, because she hasn't been here very long, there are not those underlying relationships where she feels that she has to go one direction or side with, with another direction. It's more like she's new, he was new, so it's not like there's that history there that might muddy the waters. I feel like that would definitely be a plus.
Until a bad investigation report was given.
Well, you have to have an HR department and an HR department's always gonna have a boss. So there's not any way around that.
My thought is, this should have been done by somebody who is not their supervisor. She should not have done this to her supervisor.
But that's the purpose of the HR department.
I'm just saying.
And I feel as though you shouldn't be investigating your boss.
Well, the, the purpose of me providing the statement is I was a firsthand witness in that meeting.
Right.
And that's why I presented my statement as to what took place in that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I have a hundred percent faith in Denise.
Did you, did you sit behind a closed door with him?
With who?
With Mark on this? When you come up with your, um, your evaluation, did you sit with him?
To go over this? No.
So he hasn't seen it?
No.
Until he got the email before us?
No, he has seen this because in any investigation, when somebody is accused, you have to let the person know who's, the accusation's been brought against.
Right.
What's happening.
Saw the results before we did.
He's, yes.
And did?
And so did Jerry and so did Brian.
Yeah, and that's really, that's pretty typical because he has an opportunity to prepare for it and, uh, um, so.
Yeah, well, that's an important point that, you know, everything was done with the blessing of the labor attorney. Um, so I don't know how much more third party you need.
Brian.
Brian.
And that's, that's part of the PRR too. It says in there specifically that the attorneys need to be involved. And that's why we went that way.
Has this been discussed with the person who made the claim? Yet?
There were parts of it, yes, that we addressed.
Okay, you could proceed. I don't agree with it, but I'm just one.
Okay. All right, is there anything, um, obviously, we have the report here. Is there anything about the report that you would like to point out?
Uh, only the, the, the one thing that I just wanna reinforce is I was asked by Mark as the HR director to sit in on two meetings that he had in regards to the same issue in rumors and gossip. And in both meetings, his demeanor never changed. He, he was the same with employee A as he was with the person who brought the accusation. And there was no, uh, there was no grounds for this accusation in that meeting. Topics were touched, the rumors were addressed. And with, with the person who brought the accusation, there were also some performance issues that were discussed in that meeting. And then the next day, that person came and said, well, I wanna file this accusation. So I documented everything for council, shared the statement from the employee. And in my professional opinion, there's no merit to the accusation.
Okay. All right, is there anything that you require of us? Do we have to? We're just here to hear the presentation.
Yeah.
Okay.
You are the ones that ultimately had authority over the city manager, so you have, you make the final decision with regard to this complaint. You know, whether it goes forward or, you know, any job action, that's your decision.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion then to agree with the HR director and her findings in the report. That is unsubstantiated.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I have a comment actually. I, uh, once again, I just wanna say thank you for the presentation to where you basically did a great job of showing both sides' opinions and uh, situations that, that they reported to you. I thought that you did a great job of showing both sides and then what, what occurred. And so I thought you did a great job doing that.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any staff updates? Attorney updates?
Um, I, I'll be doing a presentation through your next meeting if you, if you want with regard to past legislation. Um, it should have all been signed by that time. And, um, if you wanna hear it, I'd, if you do it like we did last year.
Good or bad?
Uh, I got good news and I have bad news.
All right.
Okay.
The good news is you're, uh, the, uh, doing away with the surcharge for utilities was not passed.
Good, good, good.
The bad news you already know is that Form Six survived, so.
For this year or next?
This year.
Is it still pushed to January?
January.
Okay.
So.
We don't have to file it this year.
Yes.
You'll be filing it in January for this year. Right? Right?
Oh. Okay.
January of twenty five for the year twenty four.
I got you, so July.
You, you sent me a thing today, you sent all the city managers about the Form Six. About presenting that if they want to. That PowerPoint.
You want to see that Form Six PowerPoint that, um, I pulled off of Florida League of Cities?
I would.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. We'll prepare for that for the next meeting then.
Okay. Okay. Very good.
Yeah, I got kinda the impression from that PowerPoint that they were talking about this year, so. Might be, uh,
I see.
Good idea to know before it's due, right?
Sure. A copy of Form Six for council? By city clerk?
I didn't hear you.
Did you print us copies of Form Six for next meeting?
It's actually a digital filing. I'll give you the sampling. Um, if you're curious to look at it tonight, I already have the candidate packets online and it is part of that packet.
Okay.
So I can, I, I will send it to you, but just in case you wanna look at it.
That's fine, thank you.
Very good. Moving on to item number eleven, in our last meeting, Councilmember Taylor had a packet of information that was subsequently requested and she has refused until tonight, so we'd like to find out why.
First, I'd like to take the opportunity to address the council and the residents of Avon Park. I had a package for ones that wasn't here at the last meeting. I had a package that was delivered to me. And inside this package, it was, um, alleged allegations against the mayor in regards to the brick building. If you was here on the March eleven meeting, you know that I offered the package up. No one took that. No one took me up on that package.
Mm-hmm.
Meaning, I said, if you want it, I got it, you can have it.
I requested it.
Not at the meeting, you didn't.
Yes.
Not at the meeting, you didn't.
It doesn't matter.
No one requested it at the meeting.
Doesn't matter.
It does matter.
No, it does matter because whenever, whenever a, um, public records request is made, it has to be turned over to reasonable time. You can't say I, I have a special time that I want to give it to you. You can't say, um, well, you didn't, you didn't ask for it then, so now you can't have it. Um, so that's, um, that's not true.
It needs to be noted that. I never said that I was not going to give the package. What I said was.
If you could pull your microphone towards your face there.
What I said was, if I was going to give the package, I'm going to give it in a public setting. Instead of giving it behind closed doors because I wasn't sure what they was going to do with it. Okay? So with that being said. I got a phone call from the clerk requesting a package from the mayor. Then I got an email from the attorney requesting the package. And I sent the attorney. An email telling him I am not refusing to give the package. But I will give it up in a public setting. Because I wanted everything to be transparent. And I think you as Avon Park citizen and these council members had a right to know what was in the package.
Chrissy, now, do you recall the conversation when you first called her to ask for it? Do you recall what she said, what her response was? Just before we get too far into it, I just want to check.
Um, it, it was just, I'm. Trying to think now and put on the spot. Um, when I had called, she had just simply said that, um, she was going to get back to me. That she called me back and said that, um, she would be sending out a memorandum. That would explain it.
And that's exactly what I did. So to the public. Before this meeting started tonight, every last one of them got that same package that was delivered to me. They now have it. So if you want a request for that package, you have the right to do so. I want it to be known that I did give up the package. The city do have the package. And I wanted to keep everything transparent. Because I felt as though if I didn't give it in a public setting, it wasn't going to be transparent. So with that being said. I need to ask the attorney. And maybe there's something that I don't know, and since you are the attorney, maybe you can clarify. Why is it that the mayor and his sister was able to vote on something that was pertaining to them?
So I'm not going to respond to that seeing that this meeting. So.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask it another way. Were, were they able to vote?
I don't know if they were able to vote because a lot of it's fact driven.
You the attorney and you don't know whether they, okay, the reason, reason, reason why I'm saying is.
Keep in mind that the, the item here is to explain, the item is to explain why you didn't turn over the public record.
Reason.
If you've done that, that's fine.
Attorney Burr is because I can clearly remember. The. The homeless shelter. I voted on a fifth cousin. Okay, and you guys made me go back and revote again, and she was a fifth cousin. Yes, yes.
I don't recall that.
The homeless shelter that it died on the floor, the homeless shelter.
Sure. So the point is that if you feel there's been wrongdoing, there's, there's ways to handle that. Obviously, this board is not going to be able to make that decision. This board is not going to give you the answer that you're looking for. So if you think that there's been ethics violations, you know what to do with that. You can confer with Jerry of how to handle those things. So this is just, this is just political theater is all this is.
Mr. Mayor, now that the council have the package. Because I think Mr. Bernard, uh, voted that he didn't have enough evidence and because he didn't have enough evidence. That he gonna have to vote no. Now that the council have the package. I am requesting that the motion be put back on the floor for a vote. Because I don't believe that when you and your sister voted, that you should have voted.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead. And I got some questions from Mr. Bernard.
What was discussed? Was to take it to the Commission on Ethics. Now, as I sit here tonight, I was informed today that there was a complaint made to the Commission on Ethics. So it's already been made. The Commission on Ethics, that's what they're there for, to suss out if there's any issues dealing with ethics. I have full confidence that they will do their job and they will see if there's an issue there.
Well, that, Mayor, that is something that was done by private citizens. I'm talking about Avon Park City Council. I want Avon Park City Council to be held responsible and not.
Park City Council is not responsible.
I'm sorry?
If you think there's an issue, you're more than within your rights to make a complaint.
Okay. I've got, I've got some questions for you, Bernice.
Go ahead.
Question number one, when the city clerk, okay, you've had the same training that I've had as far as public records, correct? If someone does a records request, what's our duty as a city council person?
To give it to them.
To turn it over. You did not. When Chrissy asked for it.
I did.
No, you did not. You did it today.
I just turned it over.
Okay, well, guess what? It's not your decision.
Okay.
When, where, why, or how that information is turned over.
And it wasn't your, and it wasn't your decision.
You have to let me talk. I listen to you. You have to listen to me.
Decision to request for it. If anybody should have requested for it, it should have been Mr. Burr, not you and your brother.
I didn't request anything, sweetheart.
Oh, yes, she did.
Chrissy, did I make any public records requests?
No, ma'am.
No, maybe not a public request.
Second of all, it doesn't matter if somebody requests a public record that they want to turn around and use as toilet paper. It is not your decision to decide whether that's an appropriate request. If it's an appropriate time. Or when, where, why, how, or who you should be giving it to. I'm not done yet.
And if you think I did something wrong, maybe you.
Well, I'm not finished yet. I've got a few more things.
If you think I did something wrong, you should put in a complaint.
All right, one more thing.
Second of all. Are we allowed to communicate with other council members about future agenda items?
I don't know, are we?
Are we the rest of the council? Are we allowed to talk to each other about future agenda items?
Are we?
Are we, Mr. Bernard?
Not amongst ourselves.
No.
Not amongst ourselves.
Did we all receive an email from Ms. Bernice?
I did.
Giving her opinion on a future agenda item?
Yep.
You didn't get an email, Jim? Did you get an email from her?
Every council member.
Let me see, got it right here. Hold up. It was sent to Gerald Burr, Garrett Anderson, Jim Bernard, Michelle Mercur, myself, Mark Schrader and Christian Hardman. On Thursday, March twenty first. Jerry, is that against the sunshine law to communicate with other council members on a future agenda item?
That wasn't a future agenda item.
You asked for it. I'll, I'll get to number three in just a second.
That is something we had already discussed.
We're discussing it tonight.
Understand that. We had already discussed it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one question for you, Chris Brittany.
Yes.
Was, was that on the city email?
Yes, yes.
But a lot of times, as everybody knows, there's, we've been told that many city emails, unless they're from within the city. Not to really pay attention to them.
Right.
So.
Yeah, this one was from Bernice, but.
So I, if, if it was from her, if it said outside sources.
Yeah, that's fine.
Look at it because I don't.
Well, let me, let me address.
Well, I walked to one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I've gotten many emails, uh, city emails from the mayor.
Right, with wrong names.
And I know that the mayor would not send me a city email. And I know it had to be bogus, so I know enough training from, uh, from the attorney, from sunshine ethics classes. As well as, uh, I was lays on positions I've been in, as well as for IT tech. Don't open something unless you know who it's from. So if you send me an email on a city email from a private source. I probably didn't pay any attention.
Just be thankful you didn't.
That's why, that's why I said what I said.
Okay, so Ms. Bernice, in your letter. Please advise our city clerk to place the item on the agenda.
That is correct.
This agenda.
This agenda.
So it was not a past agenda.
Agenda.
It was not a past.
Agenda for tonight, the same thing that we had discussed on, uh, on March.
Okay, so you already knew you were going to be on the agenda and you emailed us.
Going to be on the agenda, but what I was requesting, what I was asking is something that we had already discussed on March the eleventh.
No, ma'am, because you just asked for a new vote. So no, ma'am, that's not accurate. Yes, you did, just now. Yes, ma'am, you did.
No, I didn't. I said that I want Mr. Burr to explain to me, why is it that you? And your brother was allowed to vote.
And then you said I would like for it to be brought back up for a vote.
No, I did not. No, I did not. No, I did not.
Heard it, but that's okay. Number three, you're also saying in your letter that you are refusing.
No, I did.
Will not turn over the packet unless it is done in a public meeting, so put it on the agenda if you want it. That's extortion.
Thank you. That's not.
On the, yes, it is, ma'am.
That's, that's called transparency. That's what that's called.
That's called transparency. Told the city, you can't have it unless you put me on the agenda.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I can read the whole letter if you want me to.
Said. When I submit the documents, it will be in a public setting. I also said I was not, at no, it needs to be noted that I am not refusing this package. You, you missed that part, right?
Nope, I got it right here. It's in bold.
It needs to be noted that I am not refusing this package.
It says, but then you finish it, you continue the sentence. Because you say it needs to be noted, I am not saying I will not release the documents. What I'm saying is I will not be releasing them outside of an officially scheduled meeting. Extortion. If they didn't put it on an officially scheduled meeting, we still wouldn't have the documents today.
Brittany, Brittany.
That's what your letter says.
Something wrong, then you need to file an ethic.
Yeah.
Well, extortion is criminal. That's not an ethics complaint, so.
That's what you need to do.
And perhaps we may.
Transparent and I gave it to you today.
Perhaps we may, but the plan is that this isn't helping anyone do anything. So there is a perfectly set up board to handle this type of complaint. So report it if you wish, but the point was there was a public record that was requested. Public record is now here. If any ethics violations have been committed and people want to report them, by all means, God bless you. So we do have a couple of signups. We have at least one sign up on this topic. Owen says, uh, community comments, so we'll ask her what she means by that. But, uh, Mr. Michael Durham. We'll just give your name and organization for the record, please.
Good evening, Council Mike Durham, um, representing Steven Madre, Fitness for You, as well as his wife Katie. Um, I'm here, Mr. Madre contacted me. I started representing him back in April. Uh, rising out of a battery by a person named Daniel Salls, that would be the employee of the mayor. Also, we've seen the business associate of the mayor involved in Fitness for You. And what's interesting, that battery occurred in April. About two weeks after the building, the brickle building was transferred to Danny Salls for one dollar, new roof and so forth. Within two weeks of that, Danny Salls found himself at Mr. Madre's business. Forcing him, I'm glad you used the word extortion because it probably fits right in here in some way or another. Yes, can you hear me? All right. And Danny Salls was presenting. A partnership, some type of an agreement whereby he would get fifty percent. Ownership. Forcing fifty percent ownership of Fitness for You to a company called Malibu Spa. Well, Malibu Spa happens to be owned by the mayor's wife. And I don't know why Lee Sor, because the mayor's talked about this ethics opinion he has. Where as long as you have a lease or and a leasing agreement, it's totally ethical. Why? Malibu Spa would be so interested, or Lee Sor, Danny Salls would be so interested. In whether or not his tenant, Fitness for You. Gave fifty percent of his business to Malibu Spa being the mayor's wife. Well, that conversation didn't go well. Mr. Salls was, did batter. Mr. Madre, Mr. Salls was arrested, was formally charged. Uh, worked out a diversion program at the state attorney's office, so that case was dismissed. I couldn't see any reason why. Nor did Mr. Madre see any reason why Danny Salls was criminally charged and have a criminal conviction of a battery that does have weight. Um, to that in Florida. But nonetheless, he paid off his, um, medical bills. Some other expenses. He lost some time at work. He couldn't train in the gym. So this brought up this entire packet, I think, that the council has tonight. And when you go at this packet, what you see here. Is that this brickle building conversation occurred twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Where it was always thought that there would be a Fitness for You tenant. But there was an investor to build out that building, half a million dollar investor down in Wellington, maybe out of Lake Placid. And once the transaction occurred, once the building was transferred to Danny Salls for a dollar, that investor disappeared. So Danny Salls needed another half a million dollars. Now, whether that occurred after the investor disappeared or that was thought of before, I think it's an important issue. And I think that's where the mayor stepped in. It may be Malibu Spa, maybe the mayor's father through a construction company. So they built out this building this entire year. What's interesting about this particular month of April twenty twenty three. Is there's some building permits that need to be issued. And building permits were being, the CEO is being held up. Unless Steven Madre signed over fifty percent ownership of Malibu. Uh, fifty percent of Fitness for You to Malibu. And, um, Steven Madre never did that. He was battered. Um, we never heard anything more about that. Uh, until this issue started coming up again in the last week.
Who brought the issue forward, Mr. Durham?
Who brought the issue for, I'm not clear on who brought it forward. I just observed a meeting. I watched your council meeting last week. I heard you on the radio. I think you, uh, referred to Mr. Madre as a con man here in public. Um, you also alleged him of stealing some company. I don't know what company he could steal. I don't know if you have an interest in a company that he could steal. Uh, so certainly we'll find out a little bit more about that. I think what seems to be here in his vote. And I think what Mr. Madre would like is for the council to take a vote and investigate this entire matter. You had a long discussion about an RFP over at Pocket Park earlier tonight. And determine whether or not. There was some misappropriate behaviors during this RFP process. I've looked at some documents. It seems the RFP may have been out there twenty eight days, may have been a limited amount of time. I heard a ninety day RFP today. Um, you couldn't pull that RFP, so it seems to be some conflict. And I think the public would need to know. If the city's going to operate its business this way, if you need to have a council person sponsor your business or be in partnership with them or having a business association with them. Just let everybody know, put that on the RFP. That way, everybody can play by the same rules in the same game. But I don't think that's how the city council wants to operate. I don't think that's how the public expects it to operate. Um, but I think if, and I heard Mr. Burr, and I respect Mr. Burr, I've known Jerry for many years. Um, the city doesn't have good luck in investigations. Well, you can do this properly. You have probably one of the most experienced, uh, investigators I know, sitting to my left. Your city manager, Schrader. He knows how to conduct an investigation. He knows what a scope of work looks like. He knows how to get qualified people to look at issues. He knows how to determine their findings of fact. And you could do this if you really wanted to. And I think at some point in time, if you discover that this transaction that the city did. That the city council was not fully informed in its transaction. When it transferred property to an individual. You could set that unwind that transaction. It could be a unilateral mistake where the city council was not fully informed in that transaction. Legal issues down the road and qualified lawyers, third lawyers that can do that, but that is one theory here, and I think that's what they're looking at. What you have is Fitness for You's come to town. Create a good business. He knows how to run a gym. I heard the mayor talk about he designed the gym and he knows more about gyms and that's great. Now we have two gym experts in town. But I think he's done a good business. I think if you look at the trips, I think they monitor trips. It's gone from a few hundred up to like eight or nine hundred trips. And you have a good anchor business here. Now, the issue, and the interesting issue here is in five years, four now or less. Fitness for You's contract expires. Do you think for one minute Mr. Salls is going to renew that lease for another five years? That's not going to happen. Don't you think who's going to be the next gym owner or gym runner of that area? And what signals does that send to other businesses that want to come into the city next to that anchor business? Um, after the comments made and after this has arisen, I asked Mr. Madre, have you seen any decline in your business traffic? Currently, numbers are thirty percent less for the last two weeks than they were previously. Don't know if there's a causation there, but the numbers don't lie. It's just determining what the causation is.
Perhaps people are finding out the truth.
Right, well, may, maybe, well, I'll tell you what, Mayor, if you like the truth, then why don't, why doesn't the city council appoint an independent sunshine committee? Put three people on it, develop a scope of work, what issues you're trying to determine are factual or not. They can get the scope of work, hire an independent investigator, come back and report to those individuals and you're done. That, that's essentially it. Um, Mr. Madre. There, there are other key aspects. One email I really find interesting. It was April twenty, April of twenty three. This is right after Salls took. The, uh, possession of the property. And it's a comment where you, Mayor Anderson. Are speaking to Mr. Madre about an interest about membership in a gym. If there's three hundred members, you make X amount of money, maybe fifty thousand.
Okay.
Seventy, uh, seven hundred members, you make maybe seventy five thousand. But a thousand members, seventy five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that's annual, a month or whatnot, just a blurb. And that you would all be bawling in the Keys. Now, that's in your packet, probably.
Mr. Madre's favorite hangout spot. From what I understand.
Right, that we didn't, email didn't come from you. You didn't say that.
I'm sorry?
You did. You did, you weren't going to be bawling in the Keys.
I wasn't referring to myself, no.
Okay. Well, that's all I have. I, I think, um, at the end of the day, Mr. Madre just wanted his voice heard. He did want, um, the city to really investigate this issue. And apparently the mayor's in agreement, um, to that, uh, miss, I guess there is an ethics complaint pending. And you have to understand with the Ethics Commission, just because the Ethics Commission, if you voted to have the Ethics Commission vote, they could say, that's not our jurisdiction. We don't want to do it. We don't, you, I want the FBI to investigate this. FDLE, sheriff's office. They don't have to do that. But you, as a city council, can do that. You have absolute control over what you do in the city. And it seems the public is rather bothered. I'm bothered by some of the information in, in your packet. And then additional information that we found may or may not be true, may be out of context. But there's only one way to really to find out. Um, I know the city hasn't had a good history in conducting its own investigations, but I, I imagine with the leadership of your city manager, Schrader, he, he can certainly, uh, narrow that a little bit.
So Mike, I appreciate that. But, um, I'm just asking, do you not think that the Ethics Commission is going to be competent to do the investigation of this matter?
Certainly, they can be competent, but I think what the city needs to look at is review whether or not its city code, its ordinances, its RFP process were not violated, whereby the city council may have not had all the information it needed to make an educated decision on whether or not to transfer the property to a certain individual. It amazes me all the tens of thousands of people in Highlands County. And you have a half a million dollar shadow investor and all the other individuals that could be interested in doing something. One person gets the RFP. That one person happens to be the employee of the mayor. The mayor just happens a year before to seek an ethics opinion, using city funds, mind you, to create this lease or leasing type relationship and then goes on the radio, incites that ethics opinion as, hey, I have an ethics opinion that sanitizes me. That may sanitize you from the Ethics Commission, but it may not sanitize you from what council wants to do as far as conducting business with the citizens in, in the city.
Well, I don't think that all that stuff would come out in their investigation. I mean, they did a full investigation of the matter. They would, they would certainly see that there were issues with regard to how it was done. Is that, because that's what you're alleging is, is the possibility.
Well, I, I certainly, they're going to do what they're going to do because right now the city council took a vote and says they don't want the commission to investigate it. That's not going to happen either. Just like FDLE, if there's been some, some extortion going on here. But I think it's up to the city council to make those determinations on, on what could occur. Because they're not going to get into the real estate transaction.
I, I just, I disagree. And I, I think that when you, you suggest that Mark handled the investigation and get it arranged. I mean, I, I think it's kind of throwing him under the bus, quite frankly, because in 32 years I've been doing this, I, I've seen investigations and it never goes well. But I'll tell you exactly what's going to happen, no matter what is, what occurs. It's going to be, he's a political animal. He made the decision. He selected people that were going to give the decision he wanted to see, all that stuff. And so he's, it's never going to look good for that. I know, because it happened to me. So, you know, I, I just, it doesn't matter what, what you do. You get an independent person in there. Oh no, they must not have been independent because I don't like the decision they made. So you must have picked somebody who wasn't independent. It would be a really bad day for, uh, uh, Mark.
I, I certainly appreciate that. Didn't mean to throw, uh, Mark Schrader under the bus. I've been friends with him for years as well. And that's why I thought I've been involved in those investigations, conducting them both ways. And it, and bottom line is the cities do that so they know that person's a sacrificial lamb at the end of the day. But the job of the city is to determine the facts and make decisions rationally. And my suggestion was if you set up some type of sunshine committee, it's three, so it has to conduct its business in the sunshine. They can form its scope of work, what they're looking for. You may do this and it may not even happen, but it's certainly a council's decision. And just because you can't do it well, doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. I guarantee you, if you go to any law enforcement agency where they conduct internal affairs and part of their accreditation is managing their own business and ensuring that they're in compliance with the law, with their own policies and procedures, because that ensures proper business to be conducted.
Well, I, I totally agree that there's misdoings then that needs to come to light. But I don't, I disagree with you on how it has, comes about. The Ethics Commission has, has, has the matter now, as the mayor said, of course, he didn't have to say that, but since he has, it is, um, that it's before them now and they're going to make a full decision make. But if we do it here, it's never going to be ended. It's never going to be satisfying to one party or the other. It's going to be, but the Ethics Commission is totally apolitical with regard to their decision-making process. And I think they're really the appropriate people. And it doesn't matter who asks them. It's done. They're doing it. They're not going to say, just because the council says, oh, the Ethics Commission should do that. They're, well, they're going to do a lot better job since the council asked. That's not how it's going to work either. I, I guess, I, I just think that it's, um, and I understand your perspective. Like I, I really do. You come from a police background and, and, uh, you know, those investigations are, are common to you. But it's not the same in a city. You know, it's just a much more political animal. And, um, in my, in my opinion, the Ethics Mission is the proper entity to deal with. If there is an issue, and like I said, that, that'll come to light if it's there. Um, I believe they'll do a, um, a good decision. And if ultimately it comes out that, that, that some people are right and there was an issue, then the city still has the option later on to say, okay, well, they found there was an issue here. You know, we should look at what happened and, and if something has to be undone, then it needs to be undone. Uh, if, if it can be undone.
You don't have to convince me, uh, Jerry, on what the city should do or shouldn't do. But I think as you know as well as I do, and all these council people here have been to ethics, uh, seminars. And I imagine you leave those going, what can I do? What do I do? Who, who, who's the relationship? Who's the business associate? If I tender a question that this individual's an employee as opposed to a business associate, you get a different outcome in the opinion. You get a different outcome in the investigation. They make a probable cause finding. I don't know if it's in the probable cause stage where it's being tendered to investigation or it's not even there yet. They could make, nope, no probable cause and it's done. Then you still have the same issue, all the facts, nobody knows anything. And you're probably still going to have to take this at some point in time. I don't know where it is and what stage.
Mr. Durham, I think we've given you well over.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, any questions?
No.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, as Mike said, I, I did seek the opinion of the Commission on Ethics already. And the question was asked to them, if a employee, uh, would constitute a conflict, uh, for voting on this matter, to which the response was no. Uh, if a leasing lease or relationship, uh, would constitute a conflict for voting on this matter, to which the answer was indeed no. So it's very clear that Mr. Sauls, being my employee, or a past business associate, did not create a conflict for me to vote on it, which I did not vote on it, just for the appearance of being unbiased. Um, so I feel that I've gone above and beyond. I feel that I feel I've followed the Ethics Commission advice fully. Um, and I look forward to, uh, seeing what they do with their investigation. And I think that it will clear my name 100%. So we do have a couple more signups.
Well, you're doing, I have a question for Jerry. If, if for some reason, because I've been down, I've seen this road too. If we did ask for an independent investigation, how do you go about finding those people?
Well, last time we got a private investigator.
Yep.
Who wasn't related to the city in any way. And he came here and did the investigation and afterwards it was like, it was like, uh, well, the attorney must have picked him because he's, uh, you know, going to give him the answer he wants. I, I guarantee you that wasn't the reason I picked him. I picked him because he had experience as a, as a commissioner and so on. But, but, um, it didn't matter. Anyway, I was trashed by both sides of the, of the argument after that and, and didn't enjoy it a lot.
Well, ultimately, any investigation is going to be pushed to either law enforcement or the Commission anyways. So it's going to be pushed to the state somehow, some way. And it's already under investigation for sunshine laws, which is the Commission on Ethics. So what more do you want? So anything more than this, you're just make, doing political theater. So you can spend city tax dollars on this, or you can let the state do what they do. But I think there's a lot more to this story. I look forward to it coming out because it's actually a very disgusting story. So, um, we do have a couple more signups. Katie Anderson.
Hello. I'm Dr. Katie Anderson, 507 Ridge Street, Avon Park. So I just wanted to comment that Mr. Madre wants his voice heard. I want my voice heard. He has acted like a victim here. I am the true victim here. I have put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to this gym. This gym was Mr. Madre and my vision since day one. And he knows I have a medical, I'm a physician, an ER physician. I was going to bring in a medical aspect to this gym. And I, it has been despicable. It has brought so much stress to me and my family's life. I have a two week old and a one year old. And he's bringing, bringing all this information right now when I have these babies at home. It has been extremely, extremely stressful. And Mr. Madre knows that he and I have this agreement from day one of this 50% sharing of the profits. So I just want my voice heard as well. That this has been an absolute nightmare for me as well.
Did you purchase the equipment for the gym?
Absolutely. And I have records and I have proof to show that I did purchase all that equipment in the gym. And he refuses to contact me. He refuses to respond back to emails and text messages despite me being pregnant and going through labor and delivery and still coming a week after I had my son last year to the gym, him looking in me in the eyes and telling me that yes, I am owner, half owner of this gym. So I just want to make sure that my voice is heard as well. I am the owner of Spa in Malibu. And so that is, that is my company that I was going to incorporate with the gym. So.
Yep. And you received how much money from the gym?
I have received zero.
How much money from Stephen Madre?
Zero.
Okay. You showed out.
And I would like to talk, to talk to him. He and his wife, Katie Madre. I am willing to be open and honest with either of them. They can confront me at any time.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Oh, thank you.
You look good doing it. All right. Last but not least.
I have a question for your wife. And maybe Attorney Burr, maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong. She, she really don't supposed to be able to have any compensation from the brickle building because of the mayor, right?
Fitness For You is a leasing
Yes.
Of the building.
I'm talking.
Fitness For You.
Itself.
It's not.
Fitness For You does not own the building. Daniel Sauls owns the building. No, I do not.
No.
Never have.
This is, this is the business. This is not.
Oh, easily verifiable thing. So anyway, you don't have to answer these. All right, Jane Benham. Please give your name and address for the record.
Jane Benham, 605 South Eager Street, Sebring, Florida. So I just, there's a lot. The past few weeks at these meetings have been a lot. And I just want to say, I can only speak on my behalf. I think we all see different sides of everyone. And, um, since my proposal, I have called all the city council members and just brought the idea to their attention. They have all accepted my phone calls, have talked to me, have shared their input on it, whether they agreed with it or not. And I'm really appreciative of that. Um, every time I've sent an email to Mark, he has responded very quickly. And I just want to say that when you're an elected official, that's a lot of weight. You guys make decisions on behalf of the community. That's what you guys were here for. And whether that's approved or denied, that's still a lot of weight to carry on everyone's shoulder because you're not going to make everyone happy at the end of the day. Someone's going to be upset somewhere. So I just want to say I'm appreciative that whether you support or don't support any of these ideas, that at least in my opinion, you guys have been very receptive and a really proactive board. And so has Mark. He has been very nice to work with. So thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, city manager updates.
Nothing.
Nothing new from FAA? Is there a sign up? Matt? We will just give your name and address for the record.
My name's Matt Avon Park. I'm not giving you my address. Uh, I seen you hold up your phone earlier and you guys were complaining about foyer requests. How come when somebody requests, uh, text messages between you two, since you are, uh, business partners in, in the city, that you guys don't, uh, give out that communication?
Between myself and Brittany?
Yeah, yeah. Since you use your phones for, uh, city business, those are, uh, available for fories.
Anything talking about city business would be turned over.
It has not. Says who? And also you use your business email, your company email for, uh, city business. So when those records come out, is it going to show anything different to the community? And you guys have failed twice to give up your, uh, your text messages.
I've responded to everything that Chrissy has asked for.
All communications include, uh, phone calls and, and text messages.
And what is your part in all this?
It doesn't matter what my part is. I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen.
I got you.
I'm allowed to foyer anybody on this commission, just like you failed to give him the information about your wife being a partner. Further down on that Ethics Commission, it points that out.
Okay.
But you failed, you failed to put that out and you lied to the city attorney.
It's not true.
It is true.
Follow the law, read it.
Read it.
That's your opinion, sir. Not true. All right. Alrighty, that concludes our agenda. entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.